Yeah, he was, he was all ticked off. He got the sheriff involved.
Scary?
Huh?
Scary.
Yeah, I'd care if she caught me on that for that. I went to find out, I couldn't find it. I thought I had shot for that.
Everybody ready? I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bethel Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. Uh, we have a quorum. Minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the amendments for active. For the meeting of Wednesday, August 28th.
I'll second.
All in favor? I can't vote, I wasn't here and she wasn't here.
So that's only three of us.
Three, then we don't have a quorum.
That's okay, right, on minutes? For just three people to be able to vote?
How many were at the meeting?
The last meeting?
Yeah.
Five of us.
Yeah, five.
So if you, three of you approve, let me also.
Only three can vote.
Yeah, so that would work, you have a quorum.
A present.
Yeah.
Donna Kiyoki. Do we have any new communication? New business? So we have Chestnut Knoll. Um, what I said you want to amend. Ken, you're gonna be representing the owners.
Yes.
Um, we're gonna amend a lot. I'm not sure, were you combining two lots or?
Trenton, Joseph Greenwood, uh, bought lot 14 of the growing garage on initiative. And then they purchased lot 13, which is vacant. And they wish to split 13 into two individual, well. They wanna keep proportion of lot 13 to go along with their, their home lot. And then they want to, um, offer for sale the amendment lot.
I tell ya, I was a little confused when I was trying to understand it. Um, did you bring? Or something?
Cause it's their letter, yes, the letter says they're combined, I thought they were combined.
I said, I think I'm gonna just wait and hear what.
They're combining, but they, they want me to combine it power.
Okay, alright.
I don't know how to talk.
Well, let Ken do it. Alright. So they own 13 and 14 are in 13. Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. I get it. So the originally, Ken, that 13 was the point exception as well, all of that?
Yes.
And they're switching that over to, they're gonna add that to 14?
They're gonna retain this portion of lot 13, the annual share piece. And then they would like to offer that for sale.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't reduce the, uh, original covenant of lot 13. It's all the same, as per original.
So that little triangle is going to lot 14?
Right.
Yes.
And then, okay. So then when they read, uh, I don't know, call it, registered down the registered deed.
Right.
This will be one lot, one big lot, and then they'll fill that 13.
Yes.
Alright.
It's simple, it's collision.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to come up with more questions for you, but.
How's the weather?
So Ken, how you been? Um, I, I certainly don't have a problem with this. They're nice, big lots. Uh, at Chestnut Knoll, back in the day when they were about five acres, where we still have that. So, I'm good with it.
And I've also heard the condition, um, passed by the same covenants running with lot 13 as originally.
Okay.
Uh, there were, there were original covenants in subdivision, those five, so, uh, set that and certain I would, uh, and gain lots between the waters. And that no.
Oh, that's a good idea.
No additional lots were created within subdivision. Someone couldn't come in and split one of these lots into, unless.
What lot is he on?
One of your five is gonna receive.
Um, Sue just brought up a good point. She caught something I didn't. One of your butters is my, uh, stepdaughter and her husband, the Acteras. So, I probably should disclose it or not, it shouldn't matter, but it's.
Well, I'll make a motion that doesn't raise a conflict and interest you with no financial twist in the property.
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay.
Um, I will make a motion, if you're ready, to let the application test standing, that the letter authorizing, uh, Ken to represent, and the warranty deed.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Do I need? We have findings of fact on this, right?
Yes, we do.
So I'd like to say that the application is complete. Does someone have a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion, and the application is complete.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Wanna jump onto the findings of fact?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, there shouldn't be too much. Do you have? I do have that, yeah. I was just looking, asking questions. So we'll go, did you have any questions?
I only have, it's not currently yet, it's about 18.
Okay.
I didn't understand how it would be modified, but if I don't.
Yeah. Okay. We'll get to it, yeah. We'll go, we'll get to that, yeah. And, well, Ken's the perfect person to answer that. Alright, so, we are, I'm on page one of the findings of fact.
Page two?
Um, page, I'm on page one, which says page 14 for some reason on it.
Was that, oh yeah, it does.
Yeah. Is everybody?
Sure. Do we have any butters here?
Do we have any butters here?
Technically, I'm, I'm in the.
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
Okay.
I would have butted that lot, but I'm in the subdivision.
Oh, okay. Um, I saw it in the presentation. So, when we go through the findings of fact, um, it is a real complex. But we'll go through one of these at a time. Something like this, we're gonna go through fairly quickly, and we'll go by page. Okay. Okay, so is everybody good with page one? How about page two?
I think the only, sorry, the only question I have is if there's any, anything in the ordinances that restrict or have a restriction for the size of the lots. That's the only question I have, but.
In the, um, in the ordinance for the covenants?
The covenants, yeah. This is one of those subdivisions that's really, it's, it's an early subdivision for Bethel. And the lots were around five acres, so. Um, in, yeah.
And we don't deal with covenants.
We don't.
It's cause we can't.
Right. Yeah, okay, I'm good, sorry. Nope, keep asking questions. Yes, absolutely fine, like, like that. Um, okay, so let's go to the next page, which is page 17, or page three. Okay, the next page. Okay, number 13. Additional improvements. Um, how would you like that to read?
I would say NA, because we don't, we're not requesting any.
Alright, um, are you gonna just, am I put in there no additional, um, additional improvements?
Yeah, requested.
Requested?
By the board.
Okay. Next page. Okay, page 20. Was it there? Page 21. These conditions are applicable on the last page.
So subdivisions actually approved by the DPD, right?
Alright.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't see any notes to that, Bethel.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the findings of fact for this subdivision lot realignment on Chestnut Knoll as drafted.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
And I'll make a.
Did you have any comments that is here on the subdivision?
Did you have any comments on the subdivision?
I'm, I'm not objecting myself, but I'm curious. The, the covenants, as I read them, prohibit, uh, subdividing a lot except to divide it between two adjacent lots. And so, I, I was just curious about, and, and the covenants were approved by the planning board. So, and the initial, you know, subdivision was approved by the planning board. So I was just curious about that, whether there was any problem with, as I read it, not being, uh, in accordance with the covenants. If that would create a legal problem sometime later on, you know, future sale or something.
Right.
Although they are adjacent properties.
Yeah, they are adjacent.
But it, it, as I read the covenants, you cannot subdivide a lot into two pieces unless it go, each half goes to abutting lots.
We don't enforce covenants.
Okay.
We have no force method, so your homeowners association, it's a matter that you would take on.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanna know.
But it sort of is doing that, because one half of it is going, they're just reali, I think the right word was right, realigning it. Because it's, but you can't, like, take one of those lots, divide it in half, and then sell them to two different people. You can't.
Right.
Yeah, but you can realign like that. We have to do this quite a bit on the planning board, it's, it's not uncommon. So, but we don't handle covenants. If there's a problem with the association, they have to deal with that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do.
But this, this, yeah, this should be fine. Okay, I'm gonna remotion to approve the, uh, subdivision replat plan as presented. Uh.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Okay, do you want us to sign one of these?
If they can sign two, that'd be great.
Okay. I'll start. Here.
We got turquoise.
Is that a black pen?
No, it's.
I get glue, did you like that?
Blue is fine? Alright. Okay, I'll, I'll do it.
24. I'll send this down this way. Is this your pen?
Oh, how many are we signing?
Two.
Two.
So this is coming your way?
Yeah, it's the now, so it's like cheap smile. I didn't have them on anyway.
But it was fine to take away.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's annoying, alright. Who hasn't signed this one?
I've signed both, so.
I signed both.
Good. I've signed both now.
Paper, paper, paper. I do it easy, then. Pull up the.
Maybe, maybe one of those is his name.
Alright, should have two. I thought we just were keeping our one from last time. There you go. Maybe I stole somebody's. What do you mean first?
It is done, it's done.
I always tell people that. It's not my, yeah. Information. It's because the view is, yeah, the last name, that's, it's popular in the area.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. Why can't it just see you? Wow, I've never seen it not crowded. But, um, this is some color photos that they wanted to pass on, to pass it down to Sue.
Oh.
Okay, we good? Alright. So, next on our agenda for new business is the review deeds. Um, we'd like to do some live entertainment. I understand it's not all the time, but for special occasions, it's been. Okay, uh. Did we get a deed on this?
I have a comment to make about this whole, if you're ready for it.
Yeah, I'm looking for a deed.
No, I, I assume they were relying on our previous approval confirmation.
Okay, are you? Did we do a deed this time, Emma? Okay, that's okay, we have it on file. Uh, so we don't need standing, and. Uh, could I get, what did you want to say?
I, I have the opinion that since there is no new construction, as described in this project, that, uh, site plan amendment is not required, because the town has another vehicle through an entertainment license to approve the occasional use of live entertainment. And which, to which they can assign conditions, you know, regarding any number of things, uh, probably related to time.
Right.
And noise and levels. And I would, um, if, if I would, for the sake of discussion, not to make a motion to say that having determined that there is no new construction and no performance standards affected that, uh, that cannot be addressed through a entertainment license, uh, application before the Board of Selectment, that we have determined that no site plan review amendment is in order.
Courtney, what did, um, or Emma, I'm not sure who. Didn't you bring this up to Sharon, but why?
I did, um, I don't have my code book. Can I borrow someone's code book if I should share?
Sure, you can use mine.
I didn't, I remember that. Oh, you don't have the tabs. Hold on, I don't get these.
Which one, I have tabs.
I stole my tabs from my old code book, cause I like tabs so much.
They haven't been.
They didn't put tabs in there?
Yeah, there's tabs at the end, but it's.
Oh my gosh. Those things are so hard to take.
Leave them here, don't do it. Do they?
Yeah, I could do it for you. There's not enough tabs, though.
I don't pay attention.
Unless you have your old code book. Yeah, you can get your old one back. No, my favorite, we had to before we could get the new ones. Oh. Um, so it discusses the following definition shall be used to determine applicability. Um, I'm on 140 dash three under applicability. It's on the left-hand side at the top, this is applicability.
Yeah.
Um, so, under C, it says, "The following definition shall be used to determine applicability." So it does discuss new construction shall occur when newer different materials used to build, rebuild, construct, erect or structure on newer existing foundation, which they're not doing any of that stuff. Um, "A change of use shall occur when either of the following occurs as determined and documented by the planning board. The proposed use significantly affects our performance standards as defined in 140 dash five," which are your performance standards. "Or stricter standards as defined in 140 dash seven, special regulations apply to proposed use." So special regulations is like the, Ben Breakfast and Inn Restaurants, et cetera. Um, substantial enlargement, and it discusses a footprint which isn't happening. Uh, "Or substantial alteration shall occur where there's a structural change, which there isn't." So the, the point of why things will be said is because it discusses a chain of use and it says the proposed significantly affects our performance standards. I don't have the authority nor does Emma to make that decision on if it affects performance standards. This potentially could affect noise or parking, um, and, and, like, those here, so.
So we have to determine that.
You guys can determine if it.
On those two things, the parking and, and the noise.
Well, there, there may be other standards that I. They are, um, there's, like, what's seven of them? And they may not significantly affect it, um, that's why you guys are.
Okay, so I gotta try and get through this book without any.
Our entertainment from there, there's no new construction.
Site plan review.
And it is intermittent use.
Perfect. Much like, um, you know, the ice, little, the little ice palace thing, and, I mean, it's not permanent and it's not continual.
Right, I only have a few questions, related literally to traffic, parking and noise, that's all.
Okay, well, uh, why don't we just go ahead and, um, I do need, now do I need to do the motion on the application being complete?
Well, you have a motion out, so you're gonna.
You have a motion, I put a motion on the floor.
Oh, oh, okay.
That is determining that site plan amendment is not required, because no significant.
Okay.
Performance standard impacts or that will not be addressed in a live entertainment permit, which they have to receive from the Town Board of Selectment.
Yeah.
No new construction, uh, you know.
Right.
Ample parking, I mean, people are going to be eating there, they're, they're not gonna be eating. And just, I mean, just listening, they're, they're, this is part of the experience of their restaurant experience, so I don't think it, in my mind, that's.
I don't think they should have had to come to us either. But, okay, so let's, let's, someone wants to second that, and then Brandy had a few questions, and we'll open up the discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, any questions?
I do, I just have a few questions, and you, you may have just answered them. Um, I, uh, well, the first question was the, um, the temporary nature of the, you'll have events. Are the events going to be hosting more people than you would typically expect at dinner? I, is it just for dinner type activities, or are you planning out other events?
Um, it wouldn't be like more people than we typically house at one time. We can only have so many people in our building around our patio to begin with. But we, we've done different, like, community events and things like that, like, folks and brunch is what I'm thinking of. Could we do a fundraiser for the library, we have another one coming up. And in my brain, there was somebody playing a little, at least a guitar, and I was like, I probably would be breaking a little bit. Just trying to make sure that I have those little things in order.
Okay.
But yeah, it wouldn't be more people on site necessarily, at one.
You're not like having a rave out there, right?
So what would you think, it was a change of use?
I don't consider it a change.
Because a change of use doesn't apply.
Change of use, it's not a change of use, it's, I mean, yeah, so many eating establishments, restaurants, offer some level of.
Absolutely.
I don't think, Bob, that, I think they need to go to the board for an entertainment permit. I think that it was, you know, they shouldn't have had to have come to us. But there, no one needs to make that determination, but we have to. Go ahead.
The only other question I had was directly related to what you guys were asking, because there is a con, there's a number 24 related to noise. But I know that, I was reading, there's other ordinances about that, and how would we, so. My question was headed the same direction as yours, as if this is even relevant, but I took those.
I mean, I. An entertainment permit can, they can insert any conditions if they wanna say the live entertainment can only go on as long as, uh, at the, until their food, food service ends or whatever. I, I fully expect the Slumford to put something in place, this is a mixed-use neighborhood, so, you know, there's, um, which makes it, you know, what we want in our village, so.
I agree, yeah. I'm good, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, are we ready for a vote?
Please take the motion, please.
I am making, uh, I am moving that the proposal that you eat to offer on occasion live music does not require a site plan amendment on the basis that no significant performance standards are affected that cannot be addressed through the live entertainment permit that will be required by the Board of Selectment. There is no new construction associated with this, um, proposal, and.
How'd you remember that?
Don't ask me in five minutes.
Are you good, Bob? Okay. All in favor? Okay, so move, you're set. You just need to go get your entertainment permit, um, give a lot. So what would we have put on the site plan? Twenty, I could just see maybe a little lily, a guitar.
I love the deal with me, I. So you guys wanna talk to the doctor, I'm actually.
I do have, I got an email from Jeff.
Your doctor, right? No, that's me.
Oh, hi.
It was about the noise, go to our head. So, this is only issue was to peek things that it wouldn't be turned outside. Cause he always told me that every road surface is inside.
The problem with it is, it's extremely difficult to regulate the force. The town itself has no train, I don't even know if we, we own any equipment to, uh, do that with.
Yeah, Jessica is the first.
Okay.
Kind of a cool point, I mean.
I think I.
Yeah, she goes with the, um.
And I think the Slumford would say no, uh.
Amplification, yeah.
I think, and they say like an amplification, it's obvious.
But it's not.
It's a lot of, cause it showed.
Yeah, oh, did it?
The clock plan they gave.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Um, yeah.
Before we retire, uh, I want to introduce the new members of the board.
I'm so sorry.
I'm glad you're a part of that.
Yes. This is Brandy.
Are you ready?
Brandy, ready, right? I think her plaque will actually say Brandy.
Thank you.
This is. Sue Dunn, Lori Windsor. Bye, guys, thank you.
Bye.
Back to DC, I know, bitch. You know, I'm in the Rotary, so.
Um, look, bitch. But, um, okay, so upcoming meetings, we don't have any other, we don't have any old business, other business?
Take motion to adjourn.
Nope, mentioned last meeting.
Uh, yeah, I don't, we won't have a next meeting. So, September 25th is off.
Yep.
Off the donkey.
Yes.
Wow.
October 9th.
October, huh?
Wow.
Motion on the floor, just need a second. Motion on the floor, just need a second.
I had to finish my job on.
Somebody told me that in Robert's Rules of Order, you don't need a motion to adjourn or a second or a vote, the chair can just simply call the meeting adjourned.
I found out it's so disappointing.
We are, but we're not using them well.
No, no, we're not. Removed them from Rules of Procedure last time you reviewed.
It was too difficult.
It is.
I'm just letting you know that I heard it, so.
Alright, okay, all in favor? For one last time. Did someone second, wait a minute, we gotta do this all over again. So, look at it, everybody, this is.
It is groundbreaking.